I'd like to call this regular school board meeting to order for Wednesday, December fourteenth. First order of business is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, sacred covenant for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll let the whole call reflect that Brian Coldflower is absent as well as Josh Pettit. Was this meeting definitely notified?
Yes, it was, and as a reminder, it's being recorded.
Welcome to all visitors. Is there any public comment? There's no scheduled highlight on use at this time. So next is our interview and selection for board vacancy. Our candidate is Lance Hong. Good. Welcome Lance, thanks for coming.
You can adjust that mic if you'd like, and actually the whole podium goes up and down until I switch right side there. You can kind of go through the questions.
Yeah, please, and then I'll ask you too.
The first one was why I was interested in, I think in the year and a half I've been here, I've grown a pretty deep appreciation for this community. And I feel like the community is very proud of this school. And I feel like I share a lot of similar beliefs with people that I engage with in the community and wanting to see the school continue to succeed and trend upwards. I have three young children in the district, kindergarten, second grade, and fifth grade. And so I definitely have a vested interest in wanting to continue to see that. Improvements that, you know, I've been a part of, way to say, over the past year and a half that I've been here. Exactly, it's just a personal belief of mine that it's very important to serve your community when possible. You know, you look around here and we've got kind of a small army of coaches and parents and community members that spend a lot of time, not only to the school but to the community. I think that's really what makes this kind of a special place. Definitely, I feel like this is an opportunity for me to pull my own weight a little bit in that category. What do I see as the role and responsibility of board members? I think it kind of falls into three categories. I think first and foremost is setting a good direction and vision for the district and ensuring that students' interests kind of remain on the forefront of any and all those decisions. Second, I think it's responsibility of the school board to monitor progress towards those visions and directions through regular evaluations of all school functions, excuse me, and implementing any of those improvements that are kind of identified along the way. And then lastly, I think it's responsibility of the school board to not only be a voice of the public, but also to in communicating activities, you know, that are happening at school and keeping the community members engaged. Quality, skills, and experience that I'd like to bring to the board. I have ten plus years of professional experience in leadership roles. Definitely have an applied curiosity and kind of understanding how things work and wanting to improve them, you know, where I can. Have experience in strategic planning, business, but hopefully there's some correlations between there. And then also have a lot of experience in collaborative problem solving in large group settings, so. Lastly, just anything else about me? I mentioned this before, but grew up in Levo, Wisconsin, a small town similar to Hammond. And I certainly kind of hold those values that I was raised with and see a lot of similarities to this tight-knit community. My family, grandfathers and then parents have long been involved in different town boards and county boards and have instilled an appreciation and a respect in that role. Definitely like to hopefully voting me into having that opportunity to serve the community and school board as well.
Great, so we have two questions for you tonight. The first one is, what are the challenges facing our school district?
I think personally, I feel like it's maybe not just this district, but all districts and it's finding, keeping good quality teachers that, I think there's a lot of people out there that they want to leave or are shying away from due to all kinds of issues. And I think making this a family can, I guess, get over a few of those hurdles and make sure when people come to St. Croix Central, they want to stay here, want to be here, and feel appreciated when they come.
And second one is, what are the strengths of our school district?
I think we have a great community. Obviously, we just maybe voted the new referendum for the improvements and additions to the school. I think there's a lot of great things happening in the tech ed portion of that referendum that I'm really excited to see play out. I heard Vince talking earlier, some of the shortages we have in the market, and I think these types of communities are great for for really embracing and not shaming those anti-college or alternative routes to college where there's a huge growing need and market for that. So I think that's going to be a lot of fun to watch happen.
Speaking of that, believe a strong Cardinal Manufacturing. Were they going strong when you were a student there?
That was very new. So when I was through there, it wasn't considered Cardinal Manufacturing at that point, but we did have a strong tech ed department. And Mr. Segelski actually came in, I think, my last year or two there. But he's a very good family friend, and so got to see that girl firsthand. My brother went through that program and it's just, I think it pulls so many different facets of real-world experiences that gets these kids ready to, you know, when they happen in their first job, it almost seems easy because I know a lot of these kids put in a lot of hours. They're there at five, six in the morning, and they're working all day as a senior and then, you know, putting in hours on the weekends. Once they're in jobs again, so it definitely pushes some of their limits and I think there's so many good values you pull from that. And, you know, I know we've talked a little bit about potentially doing something like that here or having different similar activities that I think would be great for students to experience.
Yeah, my dad was a tool of DiMei Gurren. He was actually the very first employee that the Iowa Votech hired in Cedar Rapids. But, you know, he was training kids with World War II machines as they were, I mean, and eventually he quit. Went to work with industry because they just weren't training kids for what the real world was. And I do think that the Votech schools and our curriculum is now preparing kids for what's out there. So I think, you know, this new enhancement in our district, I think we've always been pretty dedicated to tech ed. We just haven't had the resources. WITC is always a good spot, but I think you're right. I think that tech ed is going to be huge.
In the last ten years, I've been kind of around the manufacturing industry in western Wisconsin and even around the country. And I know there's a lot of companies out there that are scared and don't know what to do because there's a whole generation of resources that nobody has the technical skill to backfill. And there's not a ton on the horizon either, and it's just kind of our golden age of to bring that new lead in. So we'll see.
Hey, you guys should just go on a field trip to Anderson's there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty cool to see the real life, what they're going to be capable of with that program.
Right. Yeah, I saw we saw ten percent of the window plant.
It's a whole mechatronics thing until you actually understand what.
Yeah, we saw a ton over the long time, but that's how big that plant was. Yeah, that was really neat.
Yeah, my son comes home, he's excited about it every time when he comes. They're building labs right now and.
Yeah. It's wild what they're doing.
Lance, any questions for us?
No. Most of you have been about this, and so thank you for the encouragement and sharing what you expect, so.
What do we have to do?
So we need a motion.
I'll move. We appoint Lance to build the vacancy created by David to serve his unexpired terms.
So just one thing, I don't think it's probably going to be a problem, but this vote since we're just four of us, I think, has to be unanimous to represent the board and then.
Technically, it doesn't.
I know, but you know what I'm getting at because I don't think it'll probably be an issue, but it would be at the majority of the whole board, is what I feel it should be, so. So second.
Jeff made motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Host?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You don't get to sit here though, this meeting, apparently we have to wait till next meeting.
So you'll take the host in January?
Yep. For a meeting is January twenty-fifth. And you give Lance all of our meeting schedule for our board.
Yeah, we'll be checking the presentation packet, we'll set up a meeting. Eric and I meet with you. That's what we typically do with new board members, answer questions and and actually, I don't know, would be opposed to him being invited to the state conference in Milwaukee? Because it's a state convention, the week of January eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth, so we'll be seeing a phone that too. It would be a really valuable thing, especially for a board member. Yeah.
Did we get an answer on whether he has to file the registration as an incumbent?
We did. It didn't matter.
Yeah, it didn't matter.
Uncommon or new, you have to file the same paperwork, okay, January twenty-second.
I think the only one that's important is not running, not a candidate. And even that doesn't matter.
Thanks Lance.
Thank you. Congratulations, welcome. So we're on to number eight, comments by board members and superintendents.
Well, thanks for the social media about Jimmy Anderson. Yeah, I went to.
Brian might have posted that. Brian Johnson.
Yeah, related to that, I got a call from Jim Revore. His daughter Megan was a classmate of my daughter Catherine's and they played finally played like six or seven years together, but Jimmy was a big part of their life and they called me to see what it would take to set up a scholarship. So there, and they've talked to Scott Anderson, Jimmy's son. And so we're going to create a scholarship fund, we'll keep it at school, Jen will, we'll keep the fund. And initially, it'll probably be a five hundred dollar, it'll go to a graduating senior softball player. The way we have it set up, they can't apply, the coach will nominate three girls that demonstrate kind of the things that was important to Jimmy. Sportsmanship, hard work, teamwork, you know, spirit, those sorts of things. And then the school scholarship committee will then select the final candidate based on school-related community service and who they are, and there's the list of things that they go, so. It'll be a cool thing. We're hoping to get five thousand bucks so we could do it for at least ten years, but Cindy and I have already added it, but I think it'll, I mean, it's interesting and we debated about whether it should be just softball. He was a head softball coach. He was actually a basketball coach for twenty-some years, but he was always an assistant or like he was Tom's freshman coach or something like that, C-team and, but, you know, Tom and Nick Revore, who also was coached by Jimmy, you know, they had a great love for him. One of the, when Tom was coached by Jimmy, the only time they could practice was like at six in the morning. So one day Cindy, of course, would bring him to practice and got caught for speeding. And Jimmy never let her forget, because, you know, she didn't say anything, but it's in the paper that, you know, she got caught for speeding, so Jimmy was really a great guy. The thing that I remember I just admired about him is he knew how to, I mean, just what we would want to teach her. He knew how to treat every girl, to get the best out of them. Inevitably, there would be a couple of girls that maybe weren't going to survive the season because they would smoke, drink, skip school, whatever, but somehow during the season they toe the line because of, you know, they just didn't want to disappoint Jimmy. That's the way he was, and so it's kind of fun. So there would be, and so there's going to be a little card at his visitation and funeral this Saturday to tell people about it, kind of cool thing.
And when you look at the trophy case, you see a picture of a team that was coached by Mike Fern and Jimmy's their assistant, you just think, oh, those two people are.
Well, and Jimmy, Jimmy loved Mike Fern, and so he kind of came back to help Mike. But he's been fixedured St. Croix Central for ever, so. It's sad to see his past, but I'm glad that we're doing something. It's kind of cool.
Anything else? Their way to move on to scheduled presentations by guests and staff members. The first one is referendum update by world architects and engineers and Morgan Johnson. And we've got Randy here and Eric online and Ben.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. So last time we were before you, we were talking a lot about the process. We were in a lot of stakeholder engagement phase, getting lots of input from teachers, administration, and Greg and his team. And that phase has kind of come to a close. We've got all the input we need and our team's been working hard on getting the high school drawings ready for the bid market. So that includes lots of things like finishes, it includes engineering. Engineers have been going to town, getting the drawings ready. We've also spent some time, I think last time we were before you, we showed you some initial kind of concept images, and we've been refining those with administration as well. So I thought we'd share those, start off by sharing those today. And just give me a moment while I pull my screen. Dead. Can everybody see that?
Yep, let me make it a little larger. There we go.
Wrong one. It's behind us. Okay, I'll make it bigger. Shoot. There we go.
Yep, we're going to go back.
So the site plan has settled down. I think this is not dissimilar from what you saw last time, but you can see the three additions here. With the existing buildings in white, you can see the rebuilt parking lot with the added additional parking. The dedicated, can you see my cursor by the way?
Yeah, because you may have hit the hide, the hide at the bottom there, stop sharing, not sharing but hide.
Yep. This is bus parking here. We'll connect the road, we're actually widening the curve that's been affectionately called the man's curve is what I've heard, so. Trying to widen that out so I get a little bit better sightlines. Another important feature is adding a sidewalk, so as, there's a lot of parking out here for vents in the back. There's a safe way, you don't have to walk on the road to get around and out to your car, so to keep pedestrians and cars separate. Of course, the stadium, artificial turf rebuilding the track. And through that, you know, there's kind of related work that goes with that. We're planning on doing a concrete plaza, if you would, on this corner. Bleachers are a component of this as well. Let's see, what else can I highlight on the site plan? And then finally, we're bringing a path, it doesn't show connected here, but it does connect, that connects the it's like the northeast side of the building, I guess.
Accommodate the concern about the soccer kick, corner kicks or whatever there was, I think Brian raised.
Yes, so the a couple of points on that is, right now, you know, the direction we got back from the committee that gave us input was to maximize the soccer field striping. That said, soccer field striping is variable for high school and can be shifted. So right now, we are showing the maximized, which is worst-case scenario, if you would. But before anything gets ordered, there will be a process where we can review that with the district one more time and make sure everybody's comfortable with the dimensions. And if they're not, obviously, we could change the size, but we always want a bit kind of the worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
So, like I said, we'll go through a review process before any turf gets ordered because we want everybody rubber stamping that before it goes into production. So I also, I have just some floor plans here. We have some blowups. I think we went through these in some detail last time. There's been modest updates since the last time we were together, but in concept, it is pretty much the same as you saw last time. The current, or the shops are here. The business and agricultural addition is here, and the virtual academy addition is here.
Ben, is there a change in the entrance to the auditorium? Didn't you have that wall?
Yeah, yeah, it does pull out. It let's see, what happens if I? So currently, the doors are like right here.
Okay. Does still expand the lobby there.
It does, yeah. Let's see, I do have some, whoops, discard, that's what, whoops, that's not what I wanted to do. There we go. So I have some blowups on the plans. I don't have a lot to point out. Again, it's pretty consistent with what we looked at last time I was with you, so I'll scroll through these, happy to answer any questions on the types of spaces if you have questions. And then as you step back, we're going to just go through a few 3D images of the facility. So this is, we kind of call it the bird's eye view. And so you're up over the, kind of over the site entrance, almost looking down at the building, so this is the main entry. You can see the virtual school here that is in front of the auditorium. Here are the shops. And the business and egg addition back here. So now I'm going to do some zoom-ins, like you're on the site experiencing it. So this is the CTE entry. And this is probably more of a, you know, entry for, you know, won't be probably used much during the school day itself, but is used to access that advanced manufacturing space. You know, there's lots, lots of discussions around programming that involves a technical college that might be accessing that space. So we have a secure vestibule there to access that. And also is access point for the cafe space. Materiality-wise, so this is your existing building here. So what we've done is really, again, we had direction from our planning committee to try to, you know, complement and not do anything too foreign to your building. So we're using a lot of the same materials. You can see on this cafe bump out. We've brought that same base material around, we're using similar brick. The metal panel here is actually on your building, it's mostly used above the roof. But in this case, we're bringing it down to kind of replicate actually what was done in the last referendum at the auditorium entry, kind of that silver paneling. That panel was smooth, this one, we've been looking at the, they call it a ribbed panel because it's what you have on the building as well. And then the shops are built out of precast concrete panels, same mix as what was used on the auditorium. Let's keep scrolling through them here. Here's another view of the shops. And this is the main entry again, just oriented to. And then there's kind of the work area, the outdoor work area is screened. You can see the logo. We thought that that was a good logo spot. Part of the thought process here was, you know, if you just do one big wall, the same panel, it tends to get very warehousey. So that's why we kind of broke it up by extending the precast, this color precast up just to kind of break up the facade a little bit. It also became a good signage spot because of that. And then it's very subtle in the precast, and it will be subtle in real life as well, but you can kind of see some just small reveals in the precast, and those kind of call back to actually the brick patterning on your building.
We have that in existing auditorium as well.
Yes.
Match, and it's kind of a, it'd be nice to like, call it bookend.
Yep.
Existing building.
So now we've kind of walked around the side, we're looking at the egg spaces and businesses just behind it. So here, we're planning on using really similar materials and patterning to your existing building, which you can see on the left here. And then in the, right in this spot here, we actually, so there is, it's, you're never able to perfectly match, especially masonry. Even if you can get the, literally the exact same brick, they're in a different spot in the earth as they're quarrying the material. So you get some variations in the coloring and your brick's been on your building for a while and exposed to the elements, so it's never going to be a perfect, perfect match. So instead of touching the new brick to the old brick and by separating it here with a little bit of the metal panel, we think you'll barely ever notice the subtle differences between them. And then just another view of that addition, again, using the same language that's on your existing building. And then the virtual academy, again, bringing that auditorium doors out. Using the same brick and brick patterning. Now we're going to jump inside the building. So you've just kind of walked in that CTE entry, you can see the vestibule, the secure vestibule there. And this, you can also see the entrance to the cafe space, there's actually two of them. One from the school side and one from the vestibule, so depending on how, you know, hours of operation and who you're letting into the space, you can control the doors separately from a security standpoint. Material-wise, you know, we're using the blue to do some highlighting, you'll see that. And then most of what we're doing, you know, we're pulling from your existing building, but just kind of reinterpreting it a little bit, so the floor pattern is actually pulled from the existing building. You have a lot of geometric shapes in your floor pattern currently in the building. We didn't replicate it exactly, we kind of use an enlarged version of it just to modernize it a little bit. We incorporated some tack surfaces because there's lots of posting of information and projects and things that happen in those, you know, in these types of spaces. You know, trying to keep the field paint colors relatively similar. We're using a tile to protect the walls. Again, that was something that was added in the last referendum as well in the new classroom addition, so kind of extending that. One change is we are proposing to use black frames everywhere your building has a little bit of a mix of, it's mostly teal, but there is some black in the last additions. And so going to black is what we are planning. Uh, going, going to black is what we are planning on, as you can see here. Uh, so now you just turned the corner and you're looking down the, the hallway that leads to the shop spaces. Um, so the shops are on your right, um, and on the left is, uh, some flexible seating and conference space. As well as there's be, there'll be a spot. This is a printer cabinet and this is a data room. So there's some, uh, support features there. Now we're gonna walk down the hall and look back to where we just were standing. Um, and again, you can see that flexible seating on the right, the shop spaces are on the left. Also some bathrooms being added down there. Another view of that space. And, um, as part of the remodeling of, uh, the, uh, culinary space. Um, and, uh, it's the current egg shops is a mere model in the culinary. Uh, we're able to connect a hallway through that connects from, you know, essentially pretty close to the commons down to the new CTE area. And that's what this is representing the hallway. So, um, the CAD lab and the existing wood shop. Um, are on the left and that, that space will become, um, it's the, uh, fab. I think you call it the fab lab today. And on the right side is culinary. And then we just stepped into the cafe space. Um, here, uh, again, using similar materials, but, uh, we changed out the flooring. Um. It's a, uh, it's called a, a vinyl plank flooring, but it has a wood look to it. So it just tried to give it more of that coffee house. Um, feel, and you can also see the slat wall and the cabinetry, um, as part of the, uh, school store component. Uh, and then this is a view, um, in the hallway and the business and egg area. So egg is on your right and business is on your left. Again, similar concepts. So what? Um. What you saw, uh, in the CTE, CTE area. And then we just kind of stepped in the door at the virtual academy. Um, and, uh, on the left are the classroom spaces. The office spaces are kind of behind. Where it says virtual academy, and then there's a conference room on the right. All right, that's it on the slideshow. Come back here. Um, so, uh, just a couple of things to point out on renderings, um. They're always hard to get. The colors really a- super accurate to what the actual materials are. Even if I get it accurate on my screen, by the time I put it on your screen, it doesn't look right. Um, but we have reviewed the finishes and the colors, um, with administration. Um, and generally I think we were pretty comfortable, um, with the materials proposed. Um, and from here, like I said, it's really, uh, getting, finishing up the drawings, uh, to get ready to go out to bid. Any questions I can answer on design?
Looks great. So. So back to the stadium, the, the plan. It seems like when we went to referendum that we just said we're gonna add visitor bleachers. Now we're. I don't know, adding a million dollars to the stadium, so.
Yeah, I can comment on that just a little bit for you. Uh, okay, so we're gonna, uh, we're gonna bid, uh, the plan is to actually try to bid it both ways. Um, so we can get, and what I mean by that is, um. The, uh, kind of original referendum scope, uh, which was visitor, visitor bleachers. Um, and then also, uh. Uh, the expanded scope. So we want to get pricing both ways on that and just see where everything kind of falls.
Okay. I just want to stick to what, what we told the community we'd do. But both ways is good.
Yeah, you know, it's best, uh, it, it's, uh, we call it an alternate bid and, and it's always good to. You know, get real time pricing on these things and, and see how, see how it fits in the overall picture. So.
Okay. Eric will talk to that in more detail on those types of things. Any other questions on design, Ben? All right, we'll turn it over to you, Eric.
Okay, thank you guys. Um, I was there, well, me and Ben were there here about two months ago, but, uh, for those. Didn't get to know or, um, meet me, name's Eric Kivisto with Marketing Johnson. Um, I believe Randy LaFave is there as well, um, part of our team and.
Yep.
I believe he has a couple of handouts if he has not passed those out. Yet. Okay, so tonight I just want to cover three things here. Uh, first and foremost. Think you guys are aware, we bid out the elementary school here last week, Wednesday. Want to cover the results of those. Ultimately, very good news. Uh. Last budgeting round for the high school, we were at DD, uh, budget or design development budget set. So going through those numbers, how we're falling. I just want to review how the overall referendum budgets are. Coming together and then just a quick milestone update, uh, some milestones to look ahead to. Here over the next two to three months. So with that being said, starting with the elementary school. Like I said, a bid out last Wednesday, we were very pleased, uh, with the bid results. Ultimately, from DD budget, we came in roughly two hundred and fifty thousand under our, uh, design development budget, which is. Very pleasing. And then in turn, about eighty thousand from the original referendum budget, which was, um, essentially put together. Uh, a year ago to date. Better news to that is just this, the sheer coverage we had in each work scope here, um. At bare minimum, we had at least three, uh, bidders per vendor, but in some up to seven. So that is very pleasing to see. Um, and it's a good. Uh, a good snapshot of what to expect for the high school, um, to the, to the big project. So. As we kind of anticipated, uh, subs coming from the O'Clara area and then from the Twin City area. Uh, I think the location of the projects is, is very beneficial as far as. Uh, and what we anticipate for, uh, bid coverage at the high school as well. Um, any questions on the elementary school on a bid day? Or results of bid day, I should say. If not, I'll keep rolling here. Middle school, um. We're still working through designer Ben and Wald's team is working through the design. I know they've had quite a few meetings. Uh, out at the middle school, but essentially as far as budget purposes go, we're carrying, uh, the budget forward. Uh, so unless there's any questions on the middle school, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna keep the escalation estimating design contin- can contingency at those healthy amounts here until we can put. Uh, some more detail to the estimate. Bringing us to the high school. Uh, so if you guys recall from last, uh, two months ago, uh, when we reviewed the schematic design budget or the SD budget. We were about a million dollars over. And again, I think someone alluded to it. I don't know if that was Tim or another gentleman there, but. Again, we isolated that cost, a lot of that cost in regards to the, to the added bleachers, um. So with that being said, moving to the design development budget, here we got the updated set of plans, uh, from Ben's team. And through. Onscreen takeoff, taking off walls, et cetera, flooring and reaching out to our trusted trade partners. We compiled, uh, an updated budget, uh, essentially. Uh, still a little over, uh, from SD, but still carrying a healthy escalation estimating and design contingency. So with that being said, I'll, I'll keep going down here to the bit, uh, to the bottom. Um, as we sit right now. Still showing there right between one point two and one point five over budget. As we discussed last meeting, I want to clarify, we still hold roughly or just over a million dollars. I should say one point two million dollars total in escalation estimating design contingency. Uh, so as you can see, still a little delta, but as Ben alluded to, uh, through the use of. Uh, either add or deductive alternates in the plans during, uh, the bid. Period will build up additional, uh, looking to build up an additional. Uh, eight hundred thousand to a million dollars in contingencies. Uh, and with that, we're feeling very comfortable in the overall budget and, um, coming in right where we need to be. Uh, specifically after, uh, the high school bids here, uh, February ninth. So. Again, I know the high school, which includes the additions, the remodels, the parking lots, the track. So that is the big bulk of the referendum. Are there any questions specific to the updated budget here?
Eric, how do we deal with, um. Labor and materials supplied by Market Johnson? That bid out or how do we, do you, do you self? Provide any of the contract?
Yeah, we will be self performing, uh, some aspects of the work specific to concrete masonry. Uh, studs and drywall. Um, with that being said, we, we do supply bid here on bid day. Um, which would show up in the, in the bid box here. I think Randy dropped one of those off, if that answers your question.
Yeah. So it's bid out. Does anybody, did you get multiple bids on that stuff too?
Um, I guess, no, I, I should say, it's, it is not bid out, um, but it is time and material. Not to exceed, uh, so we're, we're doing it T and M. Not to exceed, um, the cost of the work, if that makes sense.
Yeah. That's helpful. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions on the high school?
Um. So we were, we're, we're gonna bid the complex both ways. Is there any reason we can't do that with the road? Like. To get an idea with that, what that secondary road really would cost, please wanted to do it. So. I don't know, I don't know if you're, you know, it just got like fixated from the whole plan, but. If we're bidding the stadium both ways, why can't we see what the road would look like? Does that make sense?
Yeah, if I can answer that a little bit, um. Uh, I, I got, and what I, maybe what I would offer is, um. The stu- the stadium, uh, let me rephrase. When we do alternates, um, the more, um. The more confusing they are or more information they are, the more conflict, complicated they can get on bid day. So I, I've always had a belief to, uh, alternates are a good thing and give us budget flexibility. Uh, we also don't want to over complicate, um, the bid process either. So I guess what I would offer is, um, if. Uh, you know, if budgets are favorable and everybody's feeling good about it and that, and there, and there's funding available. Um. Uh, then we could look at that secondary road and putting some budgets together for it. I guess that's. There's a lot of, there's a lot of engineering that goes into it, I guess, is, is a, is one component of it. Uh, I, I hate for you, I hate for you to spend your money on engineering it and not, not be something that ever fits in the budget.
All right, where was the secondary road gonna be?
Um, there was a concept, um, to route a, a, uh. Road around the private property, um, that is kind of in the middle of your property. Um, and come back out on the, uh, in kind of the farmland that you rent out. Does that help on?
Yeah, no, no, I get it. Yeah, and early on, like, early on, we had to make the decision. Just, um, you know. We never got a hard number, but, uh, you know, like Ben said, that's a lot of engineering and a lot of just to build it, then just even decide it. As a potential thing is gonna come out of sign contingency budget, you know, and it's. Don't think it was.
You can't bid it if you don't have it designed. Where the bleachers. You, eh, the design kind of comes with the.
Yeah, it's very, the bleachers are, yes, the bleacher manufacturers actually involve the engineering. So it's pretty easy to say, hey. Bid a five hundred seat bleacher or a fourteen hundred seat bleacher or a, so it's pretty easy to give them some. Information where you're not paying for a whole bunch of duplicate, um, engineering.
Is it, so it's my understanding like with the bleachers, if we go with the premium package, I guess. That that includes basically a whole new press box as well, because we'd have to carry those bleachers down and. And then the press box comes with it, so.
That's correct.
Yeah, so the original referendum said, full bleachers on the far side and, uh, a- addition on our current home ones, right?
Yes, that's true.
Um, then when the, the cruiser groups are looking at it, we wanted to move them closer. We don't have to do that, move the field closer to the. Bleachers, um, but then, yeah, the, the, uh, core planning, community planning group, core planning group was like, we. Have this idea of moving our bleachers there and putting the bleachers here. So there's lots of options from moving.
You understand my reservation a little bit?
Oh, sure, absolutely. And that's why it's a.
Yeah.
Place that is good as an alternate. And we're, we're doing that with lots of things that are.
I like nice things, but I just want, I like to be upfront and honest with the community, so.
Yeah, and what's a priority, right? Yeah, parking lot, right? It's a pretty big priority. Because everyone, community needs it more often than a stadium on track and soccer and football, you know, so, yep.
So Eric, comfortable that where we're at now, that we're gonna get. Everything we told the community we're hoping for within our referendum budget?
Correct, um, and just to expand, I know we're talking bleachers here. Right now, as these numbers said, is the new bleachers as. It came up in user groups, moving the bleachers closer to the field, so on and for, so forth. So this is the, the bigger of the, of the numbers. So. Um, long story short, yes, comfortable on how things are, are playing out. We're just gonna use these alternates as we described as additional contingencies. In case bid day is not as favorable as we saw at the elementary school.
And this is for work that's gonna be done over a year from now. So more variability and what the market might be eighteen months from now.
I, I think ultimately, I mean, there is components of that, but being that this will bid out here the first or second week in February. Uh, these contractors performing the work, at least for the scopes that will happen a year. Down the road will be under contract, um, here I'd say by, by the first of March. So they're. Under requirement to hold their price, which is gonna be beneficial.
You were gonna talk timeline, Eric, so I don't want to steal your thunder. But yeah, this project, high school starting the spring, it is gonna go two years over.
No, yeah.
Two seasons, two building seasons, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause we don't have all this money yet. We, we gotta borrow another ten million bucks.
We got the paperwork.
No, I didn't.
I promise.
Yeah, just in real simple concept of the schedule, the set is, the additions are really built. On a good majority of your existing parking lot. So we can't really do any of the addition work until the parking lot. Is moved and out of the way of the additions. So. And you need the parking to operate, um, pretty critical component, obviously. Um, so, you know, real brief concept is get the parking lot done. Then do the additions through, in the summer, do the additions in the, in the. Kind of through the school year to wrap up for the following school year. Just real quick concept on the schedule.
Correct. Um, and if it's okay, or I guess I'll start with saying, is there any other questions on the budget? And if not, I, I have a few. Uh, handouts or things I'd like to share on the screen here as far as schedule is concerned, if that's okay. Um, I will see if I can make this work. Okay, are you guys?
Yeah.
Seeing that, um, yeah, just to elaborate on what Ben said, as far as phasing goes, uh, I guess, again, starting. Um, hopefully on the track area as soon as the first, uh, first week in May, and we had a little. Collaboration with the track coach on how that would work with, uh, sporting events here this spring, but essentially starting, uh, in the track area here. First or second week in May, twenty twenty-three. Uh, with that being said, as soon as school is out, graduation has happened. Uh, we'll start on the parking lot. We'd be looking to get the virtual school in here this summer, this coming summer of twenty twenty-three. And then as Ben stated, we'll be moving to the additions. Uh, the shop classes and then the business wing that'll have. The shop classes and then the business wing that'll happen over the the winter months. Bringing us to the summer of twenty twenty four, which will be jumping inside and conducting and completing other renovation areas. So very high level, I know, but that's kind of the rough visual on how we see it going. Uh, with that being said, just touching real quick, bidding bidding. Bidding schedule here as it holds, elementary school obviously bid out, looking to start the construction may of twenty twenty three. Uh, the high school, looking to have the plans out on the street to potential bidders. January sixth of this coming year, so not very far out. We'll have the plans on the street for roughly a month and looking for bid date on February eighth twenty twenty three. Like I showed in that phasing plan, we'll look to be starting. Construction, uh, right there, May twenty twenty three on the track and then right there around June first, uh, for everything else. And then hasn't been a hundred percent vetted out, but roughly for the middle school, that's just some HVAC upgrades. And a generator for generator backup power. Uh, I think Ben, correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking to get the plans out. To the potential bidders, February twenty twenty three, I'm looking to bid that out mid March. And then. About a hundred percent vetted, it might be a phased project, set some units. Um, on the roof, on the roof of the summer of twenty twenty three, but essentially wrapping everything up June of twenty twenty four. So any questions on the schedule? Up upcoming milestone dates?
Any perceived disruption noise? With classes, to the extent constructions going on during the school year?
I would love to promise no, uh, but ultimately there there might be, uh, there will be noise. When it is in regards to construction, but I can promise we'll do whatever we need to do to. Uh, mitigate that and work with teachers, et cetera, to make sure that class. Is is not affected by the construction project process.
When we did the, and Wolden was involved, but when we did the, maybe they weren't, the middle school, it was horrific. I mean, they're building on one wall and kids were trying to learn on the other, but we didn't have any choice. We had space for the kids, but that was. So I'd just be mindful of that to mitigate some of its hours of when you do your stuff. I mean, the particularly the noisy stuff. And it was demolition. That's really noisy, so.
And we'd be doing weekly meetings, right, talking details that even parking over the summer will be, right? We'll we'll have plans for all that, like for instance, the instance they're talking about the dust collector. And you know how they're gonna keep that going, work around it, you know, things like that are, yeah, being navigated.
Not your first rodeo, I'm sure you'll take care of us.
Absolutely, but great note, and that is that is taken to heart, so. Any other questions on budget or schedule on my end?
Sounds good.
All right, appreciate it, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So. So when they go to bid, do we have any sort of approval process or is that just?
Not the board, no. That's just, that's just me.
But like the scope, so they were talking that we're gonna do this option, that option, we don't decide any of that?
Correct. This is true. Well, sorry.
Way it's always been.
It's a little strange that the boards, the people that ask for the thirty million dollars, but we don't really decide on.
Yeah, but we just, it was just a guesstimate of the.
If that's the way it is, it's fine.
I mean, I would presume if there were like huge things that you.
Like a one point two million dollar.
Well, I don't think that, because that's all within the budget. I mean, we're not, he's not gonna have authority to spend.
Well, it's not within the the budget of the. The projected project when we when we advertised, we said this is how much we project that this is gonna cost, so when it's.
Yeah, but that was.
A certain more.
Nobody promised that those were. There's like, this is the best guess we can do, and we haven't designed it yet. We're doing, we're gonna build X thousand square feet and we know that it costs three hundred dollars a square foot. They don't know any of the design stuff went there.
But if we if we change the whole scope of the project.
I don't feel that way, but I hear you. I mean, if we.
It's almost like we if we tear those bleachers down, we we're creating a needs that we have to build a press box.
I don't know. I mean, the way I see it is we're through design and. Smart bidding, we're getting the community more than we promised.
Of minus the road and minus softball field stuff and.
Well, the softball field, we didn't cut because it, we cut because it wasn't needed. They could preserve.
All that was cut in the core planning group before the actual referendum.
Yeah, alright, well. I just thought it.
Well, again, it comes down to governance and administration, you know, what you say the board asked for and the board promised. You know, I would argue the board didn't do that. They passed a resolution, but the the board wasn't at all the. Or budget stuff or anything, right? So it's like, which one is it? Does the board want to run it? Do you want administration to run it? You know, you know, champion bulls.
I lose my job if if I come off as a liar, basically saying that we were gonna. I I if the stadium is more than visitor side bleachers in a field, I feel like I lied to people, so. Just where I'm at.
But it's never was just this.
That's that's exactly what it was, because people didn't want to see a big stadium. They wanted. We told them that there was needs because they're, the track wouldn't hold because the water didn't run and.
The core planning group notes are right on the website. I mean, Stacy put them on there, but that was all discussed at the core planning. Must have missed, because that was all decided then.
I went to every meeting prior to the referendum, every meeting.
The athletic stadium one?
Uh, uh, prior to the referendum, I went to every meeting that there ever was.
And the large group instructional. Yeah, it said that, yes, all all this was, all the the whole, the field, right down to the turf. That was post refer- referendum.
I see.
I went to pre referendum, okay, this is what we're gonna promise, this is what we're. But it was conceptual, that's said on everything. It's a, it's a, it's a resolution that's. But the language and then these conceptual posters, and it said right on there, design only, doesn't mean it's.
But would you agree that the need was, we needed a new field because this one won't hold, it's ruining the track? The need was, we need more visitor side bleachers.
Right. And but we also included money to improve and enhance the our site features. Cause we were gonna move it closer to the field.
Improve and enhance the press box, because I gotta imagine that the press box is a larger cost of this than improving the bleachers.
Now, I don't know.
We don't know that.
The Lions Club, the Lions Club donated the press box, and it was about forty thousand dollars. It's not hundreds.
I gotta imagine that the new press box would be much more.
I get your concern, right, is this the perception that we're liars, but the the. The complicated part is the actual people that are using it and, you know, every day and involved in it had, you know, a say in the design of it. And we're asking for these things. I I I get it, Jen and I just are at every one of those meetings, Greg, I mean, we're keepers of the budget, right? We can't exceed the budget. Some scope is gonna change a little bit, but I I'm a, yeah. I'd say I'd I'd be more riskless with my job than you. I think I would be called a liar for you, so I I get it.
Oh, yeah, right. If I survived my job, then yeah.
I mean, things changed. That was a conceptual thing and nobody lied. It's right on there, these are design.
Concepts, because the the current drawings have almost no. Appearance of what the concept drawings that came out at the long range planning. You know, because Randy Pfeiffer said at the back and said, yo, you're gonna ruin the auditorium and all of that changed. Cause we moved to a whole different side. Yeah, but I mean, so did we lie? No, we said it was a concept. And I don't know how many times it said, I hesitate to even share these because people get fixated and comment on the concept. Rather than what we're trying to get done for the districts. I I don't feel there was any promises made that this is all we're going to do. Spending thirty million bucks, if we get, and personally, I don't see the the softball field, which I'm. Pretty connected with, doesn't need to be replaced. Why would we spend three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on grass that is fine? And and I think the reason it was gonna be replaced is they thought that it would be displaced and ruined part in the construction.
Like, I guess going with that theory, why would we spend whatever for a new press box if?
And that's where the users are, where Brian and Jonathan.
Because Brian, again, just explained this in the last meeting, you got all the different live streams, posing coaches, um, radio. And they're all crammed in that one box. So again, I understand this is an add on, right? And we're not, we're.
We won't do it if it isn't.
Exactly. We just committed about that once.
But we can come in under budget, like, we don't have to let thirty million dollars burn a hole in our pocket, right?
That is correct, so. There's lots of needs in a thirty million dollar project and, yeah.
We've got Paula Anderson here with our unicycle program. Thanks for coming.
Well, I was very excited about my grants, but now I'm fancying this. Okay, I run the unicycle program for a little over fourteen years. Family that unicycle bombed, dad, the kids asked me to start it. So, um. Six years ago, or a little bit more, I started writing grants, so now when a kid takes a class, I say, when you go across that gym unsisted, you get that unicycle. Last year, I gave away forty two unicycles. This year, I got a five hundred dollar grant from St. Perellector, two hundred and fifty from Hudson Dayberg Rotary. And this week, I got five thousand from the Hudson Hospital. We do about seven parades, we do a few devils at, um, nursing homes. During COVID, we did outside a couple nursing homes in New Richmond, on the snow and the ice. We did December first, we did the New Richmond Tree Lighting Parade. We were unit fifty one, we lined up at five thirty, the parade started at six, we got in the parade about seven, so those people waited an hour and a half. And a few might not have brought the mittens, huh? And but they had a blast, they did carols and. They get pretty excited. Lights on, although the unicycles spoke and.
Oh, cool.
Kids were dressed up. If you look at the Hudson, um, Star Tribune. Lauren Miller from the middle school was dressed up like it's a Santa Claus and she got a big picture. I got it out, we gave it to the middle school. So if you have any questions, we're there every Thursday, three to seven, kids can come anytime, they can leave anytime. It's ten dollars per year class. We aren't there when they call up school. It's okay, they're the normalists, man. They'll be okay at school. Um, so it's going well. I have a gal that I caught ten years ago, she was six, she learned to. Unicycle, she was from Emerald, that was old school. Her whole, all her siblings have learned the unicycle, and now she came back this year at sixteen. And assists me on my classes, she's excellent, so. Her brother helps move it, she's. And Mr. Green, he'd be a nice, put a bunch of hooks in the. Boys, but it used to be the shower, and so they could hang up all the unicycles in there. Once they get a unicycle, they decorate it so then they can serve it for the other kids to use cycle. So we have a full shower room with hanging cycles. I have seven giraffes, kids can run the. Uh, ride a draft that's tall ones. I have a couple ultimates, that's a wheel with pedals and no seat. And I just had a girl go across the gym on that, um, uh, elementary. Saying when they go across the gym and get the unicycle, it's from the elementary, they get announced the next day after school. That's the most exciting.
Not the unicycle itself that you get? Do you still give the free one? Yeah, I got two of them in my garage. They still ride them, so.
Yeah, no, that's cool. And they're decorated, so we. I got a few kids give them back, but, um, yeah, it works good. It's all good. It's unique. It's, um, we do an all school demo at elementary in February. Encourage Mr. Whittaker, we won't make you ride.
I've been to it, yeah, as long as I don't have to ride.
Two teachers that we asked to come up and they get them out of the unicycle there, you know.
Mr. Moll, I've did it.
And Mrs. Clay has. She worked. Um, platform shoes that day and they're like, oh, Mrs. Clay. That's very wise, she's a choice. It's all good, enjoy it.
So this latest round, five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in grants, how about how many unicycles?
One thirty last year, they cost one fifty, this year they cost one seventy five, you do the math. You know, I had. So I got the grant in December, so I had till December to spend that down, and that will be a problem.
Okay.
Forty two unicycles last year. I won't do that, it was a fourth grade last year where a force wrecked them.
Do you buy some unique ones once in a while, like the giraffes and stuff?
I don't, we get enough, so they don't take those home. They use, they can use them in parades if they're comfortable, and they do sometimes in summer. I have a few that are really good riders. I want a special needs girl that, um, learned unicycle last year, and I have two special needs kids taking the pass this year.
Your unicycle supplier must really like you.
Well, he has a real job, so it's okay, but he does look. So any questions?
No.
Anytime, if you're having a bad day, kind of feel sad, you come over and watch unicycling, you'll make a smile.
Yeah, it's more than just unicycling, it's a a social gathering kind of.
Well, we, they're jugglers and, um, we do balloon twisting and we get invited to places to do that. They actually had a fundraiser last year, the fourth grade. I bought two hundred balloons for them. And then they twisted two hundred balloons in animals and shapes, and then they sold them for quarter piece to all the fourth graders, and they made forty eight dollars for the play. It's a circus. Thank you.
Well, thank you for everything you do, Paula.
Yeah, thank you, Paula.
Moving on to financial reports.
Uh, bank account balances is, um, November thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Citizen State Bank checking, hundred and twenty three thousand four hundred fifteen dollars and twenty six cents. Citizen State Bank Money Market, twenty four thousand four hundred and twenty six dollars and forty five cents. Citizen State Bank Fund forty six, fifty three dollars and forty four cents. Citizen State Bank Money Market, uh, suicide prevention, sixteen thousand eight hundred sixty nine dollars and sixty one cents. Just like, I always forget what this is, it's like fund forty three or something like that. Anyways, it's the debt service for the. For the referendum, basically, a hundred and fifty five thousand dollars, seven hundred and seventy nine. Hundred fifty five thousand, seven hundred and seventy nine dollars and fifty two cents. And the other debt service account is eighteen million, four hundred four, four hundred and six thousand, seven hundred ninety two dollars and twenty three cents. For a total fund balance of eighteen million, seven hundred twenty seven thousand, three hundred and thirty six dollars and fifty one cents.
Motion by Jeff and second by Dave. On my favor. Financial reports accepted. Moving on to consideration of consent agenda. Got the approval of minutes and resignation retirements, psychiatric modifications. And we have one. Uh, full time and for part time, or the curricular modifications.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So Vince's motion, Jeff second, on favor. Uh, moving on to administrative reports. Student enrollment update.
Uh, students in seats, as you can see, one thousand six hundred and thirty five as compared to last month, it's up one. And, uh, up two since the beginning of the year. Again, that's students in seats. Um, then we get down the middle of the sheet, draw your attention to the free to do lunch. Percentage is at twenty two point five seven. And then, um, lastly, the bottom right hand corner, you can see our virtual charter school. And then um lastly, the bottom right hand corner, you can see our virtual charter school. Uh, December numbers are two hundred and forty. Students that are open enrolled in our virtual school as uh compared to two hundred and sixteen at this time last year. And then you can see our open enrollment numbers, the very bottom, uh left hand side, three hundred and sixty-nine students open enrolled. In either virtually or in seats, one hundred and thirty-seven open and rolled out for a net plus of two hundred and thirty-two students. Questions on our Roman?
Well, moving on. The key word of our school board as well, student staff and community recognition. Vegas.
We have Amy Stevens. Thank you for your tremendous commitment of time and energy put forth in the high school play. The sun and props are amazing. We have Aaron Fagan. Thank you for your leadership and commitment to the high school play. The Christmas Carol was a great show. You're a great addition to the SCC High School and Drama Program. Melanie Newman, thank you for your leadership and commitment to the high school play. Christmas Carol was a great show. You're a great addition to the SCC High School and Drama Program. We have Sean Conway and Ben Helmer. Thank you for an awesome job you did, leading and playing with the pit for the high school drama Christmas Carol. Mitchell Donahue, congratulations on completing your first show as our new auditorium manager. We are so lucky to have you on the team. Teresa Davenport, thank you for your dedication and efforts in continuing to help our district grow. Through your continued education, you have taught us new things and have diligently helped. Our other administrators in the work. Thank you for your leadership. Amanda Langman, thank you for your dedication and efforts in continuing our district growth. Through your continued education, you have taught us. New things that have diligently helped us, helped our other administrators in the work. Thank you for your leadership. Karen um Daddas, congratulations on your first SCC Elementary Concert. The night was a marvelous way of showcasing all the students I have learned in music thus far. Thank you for all your efforts. Uh, we have Pastor Kim and the ladies of Trinity Lutheran Church. Thank you for your effort. Your very generous donation in the Red Shovel Fund, Holiday Angels in the Backpack Program. We truly appreciate your kindness and generosity. The money is going to help many families and students in need.
All right, moving on to notice uh to board of automatic rollover provisions of administrator contracts for twenty-three, twenty-four.
This is the annual reminder in December that um unless the board notifies the administrator prior to the end of January, uh twenty. This next, this coming January, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, um that their uh contract will be automatically rolled over for additional year.
Thank you.
So then just decide in next month. With that saying, just a reminder.
Yeah, it's in the policy. It's in their contract that it automatically rolls over unless the board makes an affirmative decision. And in policy, we have the administrator tell us, so we don't forget it. So it's, it doesn't just slip by inadvertently.
Well, we. So last year, we. We had like a a meeting where we met in closed session and talked about.
It's decided.
Yeah. Will that be January? Just to kind of be consistent, that's what we did last year. We talked about it, came in and kind of got a report from each administrator on.
I think we decided last year that we didn't want to have admins coming in and.
Well, cause actually we did it in December last year because of this. You know, but it was because of this. It's like, it's not an annual thing.
I think, I think it'd be appropriate to have a closed session, session. To talk about whether or not there's anybody we wanna give a notice of or not continuation.
Do we do that at least?
Well, but if, I mean, if.
We're not saying there is, but again, yeah, discussion's always good, right?
Or do we trust that Tim would come to us?
No, cause I'm included. So that would be without me. You guys just have your own both session.
I think we just have a discussion.
And as the, an agenda, closed session with notes. So it's properly noticed and could be a short meeting. So just to clarify.
So.
They're asking for that for January, so I'll keep with Kelly to put it on the agenda.
So we will do the closed session to discuss admin.
Roll.
Roll over in January. All right. Have they got? So we'll move on to core agenda items and these are considerations of preliminary very approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar and this is preliminary.
Yep, so all three calendars are there for your appraisal. Um, again, we annually, we do this in December. Uh, and then bring it back in case there's any feedback or, you know, suggested edits or you want some further vetting. Um, for your formal consideration of approval in January. This week, was the Thanksgiving week well received? It was. So in our rough draft, we started two months ago. We, we had us going to school. Um, it was two days, one day Tuesday. Um, so. We added them back in after the feedback was so positive for taking the week off. The biggest uh question mark is whether there'd be some sort of learning, you know. Gap, I would say, kind of similar to the Christmas one uh at the elementary school, but it wasn't. So it was well received. Um, so yeah, this calendar mimics this current year's calendar. Only difference is we actually get a line so that we're able to get out uh in May. How many school days issue uh with this calendar because we're cutting it close, especially with inclement weather day cushions like tomorrow. Um, we are adding seven minutes, planning on adding seven minutes to the high school schedule. I'm gonna enter class period for the day to get our um minimum required hours of instruction. It's high school because of the late starts on Wednesday. That gets close. So um that's already in plan for next year and then um it's also being reserved as an option for the remainder of this year should we run into. Again, excessive number of inclement weather days, we could just change the schedule for the remainder of the year at any needed given point.
I'm seeing that this been vetted with the admin team. Also. Teachers are, no, we, we uh, we haven't, we have not been asking teachers once in a while when things add up, like should we take Thanksgiving off or take a, you know, a. Spring break, we've done in the past, but the last. Three, four, or five years, we haven't done that. There hasn't been really. And we found when we did try it, it's just you get confused. So many different opinions. Wasn't helpful. So we, you know, we get their input more, you know. Informally, I guess, building level meetings and stuff.
Since you brought it up, I've never heard an explanation. What's, what is up with the late starts on high school? Why, why is that a thing?
And so professional learning communities um are a very effective thing where all our teachers are able to collaborate, right? So let's sell the social studies teachers at high school. At the elementary, you know, it could be all first grade teachers at the middle school, for instance, seventh grade, all the seventh grade teachers or. The force uh social studies teachers, right? So there's different groups that have to make planning, instruction, set a very collaborative. Very powerful. I think it's been a game changer in all of education, but the challenge is the high school doesn't have a common planning period. Oh. And that's like the elementary, right? Everybody has specials at two o'clock in third grade and they go to art, music, computers and and. Uh, middle school's similar. They can have kind of couldn't find that when it makes sense, you know, high school. So that, that was the solution.
And presumably, high school kids can then for themselves for two hours.
Correct.
An elementary.
When they're supervised and it seems to do, but yeah.
Yep.
I guess why.
Good question.
Yep.
So we now will move on to some policy work and it's the consideration of the first reading. Of the board.
Again, uh, for subscribers, Policy Resource Guide, Kelly and I chose to start. Chronologically, right? We're complete, fully complete through three hundred and forty-some. So that's where we picked up. Um, against students are, both the three hundreds are uh to do with students. Um, so that's where we figured we would start. We um. Again, out of all of these, we, we, we're, we're shooting for eight per board meeting, eight new ones. So that means next board meeting, there'll be eight second readings and eight. First readings. All these are vetted um by WASB and their legal counsel. We of course have to tweak things to maybe. For instance, with the grading line, standards based grading, formative and summative assessments, you know, that are. Not necessarily unique to us, but weren't in the language that WASB had. So it is, it is unique. Fits us. It's not unique to just us, but things like that, just little words. And then they. Um, there were a few that they didn't have templates on that we developed through borrowing other. Uh, ones and then we, we developed them what we felt was a first draft, sent it to uh WASB Legal Counsel. They vetted it, stamped it, approved it. So that will be the protocol moving forward. Uh, so just know. They're all vetted by WASB Legal Counsel, but you might see a word in there, catch something like, oh, this doesn't make sense. And certainly words, but no.
So these are new policies?
Sure. Yeah, the new format and they will replace some existing ones you see on our website.
So we're not gonna see like, this is what it used to read. This is the.
Correct.
Okay.
That one, like if you prove it in the second reading, we're also have the one hundred replaces and then you have to prove deleting.
Okay.
A little delete the old ones.
And your intention in your administrative review is not necessarily to change existing policy or practice to modernize it in the. Correct. I'll say this, the language supported by WASB.
Yeah.
It's so helpful to have, be able to call them and ask for their interpretation and stuff, but.
We'll see three forty.
If there's something in here that, I guess what I would ask is if there's something in here as you're reviewing what we have, the new one. I'd ask you to sort of bring it to our attention that this is, this is a change or maybe our policy was obsolete. We weren't following it anyway or something, but yeah, cause we aren't gonna necessarily go back to our policy book. Line by line, try to figure out. So that would be helpful, just to how you present these is any high level, this is a change, this is. We had to make a judgment about this one or something, you know, just the ones that.
Absolutely. All right, noted. Yes, and they, I mean, you can. And again, also part of um board development activities, you said, hey, it'd be nice if we get the pack a little earlier. That's the reason, you know, financials and this kind of stuff's gonna take some. Right? Homework and reading and looking over. But yeah, as you can see, um, you know, early childhood program, you know, I mean, that's. I mean, these are pretty straightforward. So part-time open enrollment, I mean, um, all this, a lot of these things are required by legislation.
Right. No, I don't have, I looked at all these. I didn't have any question or comments, but I just thought as we start this process.
We've seen what it was or something.
It would be helpful to just say, hey, this one's a change. This one we had to think about. You know, just like, oh, just like um the grade, we don't have what everybody else has, so.
I'll give you a perfect example. We're considering a high school going away from valedictorian and class rank to the lotty system, right? That, that's a big one. I thought we'll have, you know, Pete, Brian here and explain the rationalism, the why. Cause that's, yeah, I understand that's a. Change from the, the tradition. Yep, okay, noted.
So do you need a motion for first reading or just the fact that it happened?
I remember, I spent a while since.
Think we always just look down.
First reading.
Yeah, unless you wanted to change, right?
If we didn't talk about it.
No, then I think just even at the second reading, we can make changes.
Yep.
So.
Good progress. And did we re-subscribe or we're now subscribed to their policy book? So we have the support.
I'll subscribe as summer first, actually, let us start a little early.
So yeah.
So next month will be basically a sixteen.
And the old ones that are possibly replaced to delete, so.
So eight, eight first readings and eight second.
It's gonna look like we're really productive.
Love it. All right. Any other discussion? Moving on to other. If there's no other. We'll move on to announcing upcoming important dates, which is January eighteenth to the twentieth for the WASB State Convention. The twenty-fifth, our school board meeting here at seven. February eighth is our school board development meeting at six at the district office. And February fifteenth is a school board meeting at seven here at the district office.
I was so careful and diligent to avoid being St. Croix Central's delegate to WASBA, to the school board convention, but somehow I. Got picked to be the delegate for CISA eleven. Actually, it's kind of because we, the CISA eleven board put together a recommended policy change. And I drafted it. So they got like, well, Jeff, you can be there to explain. Congratulations. So. Okay. But we just got the book. We probably should have on the agenda. Well, we won't meet. We won't meet before the schoolwork convention. Well, they're available. I don't know how we get.
CISA ones.
No, the.
One that Josh has.
No, yeah, Josh has it and he'll vote on behalf of us, but typically it's just. He decides. I mean, the delegate gets to decide, but if anybody feels strongly about. Cause the, the process is school districts and the CISA boards can submit recommendations. There's a policy committee. Statewide that reviews them, sometimes tightens the words and decides which ones they're gonna take to the delegates to get approved. The lobbyist. Or WASBA can only speak in favor or against the things that are in the policy book. So if it doesn't get voted by the delegates, they basically don't have a position and they don't talk about them. So these are the things that. Guide and the, the policy book is about a quarter inch thick now. And so these are added or subtracting. And there's always debate about. Equal pay from the state and basically the school board association stays out of. Things that divide school boards. So there, you won't see any policies that say, hey, we should be able to referendum the aver- up to the average. You know, those sorts of things. And sometimes they just, the, the determination has to be that it doesn't warrant consideration by the delegate body. Now, if it doesn't, so, but if it doesn't make the list, there's still a process that a school board can go back to the delegates. And vote on it anyway, but it needs a two-thirds vote to get on the. Consideration and then it's only fifty, fifty, fifty percent vote to get approved. So it's a weird. Process. And there's also a process for emergency, things that came up between November first and the school board convention. There's a way to get emergency things, but they can't be, hey, you could have raised it. So that's why if you've noticed, the CISA one. Came up of our board of control and we had like three days to get it on the, to submit it. And so otherwise, so we have special, you know, I drafted it, Jerry and I drafted it and then we had a special board meeting to approve it. But it's quite, quite the process. I think there are nineteen questions, so it'll be relatively long. Sometimes there's only two or three. Now, this is the, could be a long one. I didn't notice if there are controversial things, but. There is controversy over everything. If somebody wants to wordsmith it, they argue and debate about every. The thing that you would think would just sail through without it, it, they, that's just not how these people, they're all from school boards. That's not. And so.
It is a danger.
The C one down there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm representing C seven. So I wouldn't have to vote with them. Now the, you cannot be the delegate.
For both.
For both. So I think I'm the alternate for this. You can be the alternate, but if for whether you, Josh wasn't there. And needed me to do it, then I could be the, the, the St. Croix Central delegate and the alternate for the CISA would step in. So. But that just came out. So we should figure out some way, at least give a link to the school board if people do have comments. Well, it.
It's a hard copy.
It's a hard copy. So there should be a link that WASBA has that so, cause it's, the mailing was a half an inch thick. You don't wanna send that out to all of us. But there'd be a link, but I just send it to everybody and. But I just send it to everybody and if anybody has comments, Josh will be going to speak on our behalf, but. Uh, we should just give him comments. At this point, we just have to trust his judgment.
I got one quick question. So I'm kind of a nerd. I watch other government board agendas. What are they annexing in or want annexed into the village from the school?
So I could pull up a map, but there, you know, our, our elementary school has, is divided into two big chunks. And the, the one chunk is basically the, the new addition, the back parking lot, the plate. Yeah, part of the playground or soccer field and part of that field we've been. So it's technically. And the other part of it is in the village of Roberts. Well, we got a building and two different entities, municipalities. It's just kind of an.
Does our building, does some of us into the title war? We probably have our leave parking lot.
Remember, I don't have to pull it off, but I, I can.
And I can't think our building actually sits at the top of war, but it could be our park.
And, and then the other one.
For sure, the park, yeah.
We must want the generator to sit on the south side of the middle school, so we had to get an easement.
Correct. Well, yeah, that, that was approved.
Because there's like an alley or road, yeah, on Monday, I think.
It's not, it's gonna sit on our sidewalk, but it's close enough to their curb that we just need permission for the whole.
Yeah, it's the thing that the area between the south side of the school is actually like a, an easement or a road, like. Technically, so.
Yeah, probably a roadway or whatever. There's a little elk hole in there that it's gonna sit in, but it's. It gets it then, I don't know, you and Terry looked at exactly how close to the curb, but yeah, that's why.
I was just looking through a agenda at the moment.
Want to make a motion?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna sit here a long time. Understand that this seat is the one that moves to adjourn, adjourn, so that'll be your responsibility. There you go.
Motion to adjourn.
So first was Vince. All right. Did everybody say hi?
We don't get pie or anything.
I know. We had a going away party. We had pie. He loves pie.